Running a couple minutes late. Um, just to get everyone up to speed this evening. Um, so the council actually started meeting this evening at five forty-five. We held a few interviews for um some of our boards. Uh, so the pledge to allegiance uh pledge allegiance already happened. Um, we already called the meeting to order. Um, we have four counselors present this evening and we will go ahead and get started with our regular business for April twenty-second. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our.
We can close executive session.
Oh, thank you very much. I will make a motion to close um executive session.
Second.
Thank you. It's six thirty-two. Um, all in favor of closing executive session, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you, Ty.
We move.
Okay, now back to our regular um. Regular business. Uh, we have minutes from our public hearing on April eighth. Anyone have any edits for the minutes from people? I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the public hearing um for FY twenty-six municipal budget held on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five as written. Second, thank you. A motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Up next, we have the Board of Assessors from April eighth. We'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the Board of Assessors meeting minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty-five as written.
Second.
Thank you. We've motioned in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. And last, we have town council meeting minutes for April eighth. Anyone have any suggested edits for these?
Uh, just a spell check. Under the Town Manager's report, um under Town Manager Tim's specific report, um it says Barbara McFlow. Um, it's actually misspelled, but should be Mathweed because I Googled her to try and find out some more information from there. That's how I found that.
Uh, one more time, mother was gone. The other town manager.
The second line under Town Manager.
And it's like the uh, very much.
M, just like they're all. Capital M, little a, little c, capital L, E O C. In case anybody outside of the Google.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, any other edits? I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the Town Council meeting minutes from April eighth, two thousand twenty-five as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Uh, done.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Moving on, we have the Treasurers' Warrant. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to sign the Treasurers' Warrant from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Can I get a second?
Second.
One of you. Any discussion on a motion? Questions?
Um, I was just wondering if I could get a little background um on the expense for the Adrona chairs. Uh, a lot of people have been seeing them down in the um we're first floor of the town hall. And then I saw that there was an expense item for them. So I was just looking for some background. I checked all the manager's reports. I couldn't really find anything in.
They asked me to come up. Um, so actually in your TIF district, um you have allocated a hundred thousand dollars to uh beautification and improvements to your downtown areas. Um, and that's where that Adrona chairs will be. Um, and so that expense directly is from that uh that pot. Um, because you've allocated the money to do those type of improvements. Yep.
So how would the ad or your how would the Adrona chairs show up on our warrant or where would they?
Because it's being funded by the TIF.
Okay.
But every check that we write, we will see on your chapter. Regardless of where it's being charged to, which department.
Got it.
Yeah.
So I guess um the the question is, is like, I certainly um understand and appreciate like making our like revitalizing our town and stuff like this. I kind of was looking more for the the process of how the Adrona, like whose whose brand idea was it?
Yeah. So it's 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 a combination for um additional seating for your downtown areas. Um, because in order for people to actually come downtown, they have to have um amenities to to sit. Um, if not, they go from point A, which is their car, to the business themselves, and they go directly back to their car. Um, and so if you uh the Adrona chairs are a very um inexpensive way to add that seating very quickly and to test out different areas where people are actually using those. So you can actually monitor i- if people are using those over time. And then if you are seeing more use of those chairs in that area, you can think of um doing high-cost items, higher-cost items with still low cost, such as benches. Um, and then you can, you can literally, it's a quick way to to do these experiments around the downtown while also and gathering support for those businesses, for those areas downtown, so people can use your public spaces. Um, and and for one uh one big example is the the front here of the town hall. Um, we see people during lunchtime, they walk through and they only sit at the two benches. But if you add more seating, will more people actually go to that area? And so if you're using chairs that are um semi-mobile, and I say semi-mobile because they have some weight to them and you see more people sitting out there, then you can then design that space to accommodate that um uh more people. So it's a very inexpensive way to do that very quickly. And if it doesn't work, you can you can change it and experiment other places downtown. Um, what other thing it does is that it it garner support for, you know, for your town. Uh, it's a it's a way to visually match up, hey, when I see these chairs in public spaces, I know I'm welcome here. And this space I can use, my tax dollars have have been used, so I can use this space. And so if you keep that consistent, it becomes a part of your brand that your town is welcoming to the people who live here, and this space is for you. And so that's the idea behind it. Um, and we're always looking for very inexpensive ways to do that, to increase um interaction with our town and and make sure that people stay down here. Um, and so they can use, and because we know if people do not go to those areas, they become um they become in disrepair because more investment isn't coming into that area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did that end the question? All right. I think we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion or questions on the warrants? All right. Um, all those in favor of signing the Treasurers' Warrant from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Uh, right. So we're moving on to reports and presentations. Our one for our one for Tuesday this evening is, um, I believe, DeFarlow again, um, talking to us about the TIM project. Uh, we finding impact fees study. So I will welcome DeFarlow, Tim. I don't know if there's anything you want to set up or.
A lot of communities using, have used impact fees for many years to help offset the cost of the expanding community non-tax things. So impact fees are applied usually. Um, how it works is the first thing we do, you do a study to determine whether your town is growing or not. And if your town is growing, technical growth. Then how the impact fees, how you want to implement the impact fees, is the per bedroom, is it for a square foot on? A new building, is it, is it per lawn or whatever? Um, and then last but not least, you you do an assessment to determine whether the impact need to best be applied, um, such as public safety, recreation, um CIT account. Yeah, I've I've heard for everything. But you've been a lot of places do recreation, so the impact fees, the lots of times impact fees inside the bedrooms. So you pay an extra, hypothetically, two hundred dollars, let's say, per bedroom. Per after your first bedroom, you pay an extra. Hypothetically, so assuming that they're building houses with kids having bedrooms, so you build a four-bedroom house. That extra money would command go into a fund later on, want to build a playground or something like that. Um, you could withdraw those funds and they go to enhance the community, saving you tax pay dollars, funding items that you require for extension as the community expand. And it only affects usually, so so you're impacting the building owner, the homeowner, the driver, building the house itself. Um, we can be. You know? Yeah, a lot of community do it, a lot of people use around here, done it. Um, and it's just a way to help as we expand, recover some expense funds as we have to pay for no-bowling and that leads to more fire and more playground and more things. It's it's an option to look at, it's not a requirement. What it is on, Kyle, do you know what he gets?
Sure. So I'm going to sandwich this on the ask. I'm not going to bury the lead or anything. So we are seeking authorization from the council for the town manager to sign contracts for a wayfinding study and impact fee study from the previously allocated TIF funds. If you, basically, the point is that you have these areas in the, in the TIF districts that are, that gives you funds from basically, you know, the increased value that comes in for allocation. However, TIFs are temporary. They are designed to go away. Our Pumpkin Town TIF has 15 more years to go, and then if you experience growth outside of that time, how are you going to fund those things? How do you fund, you know, more police cars or capital expenditures that these people are going to, to, to actually use? And that's what, that's what impact fees basically cover. Those new, the cost of person coming into the system is their fair share. So the current status of need is the first page. There's a need to ensure the sustainability of the town, designated growth areas and TIF districts after the conclusion of the TIFs. Impact fees are a tool to support indirect growth that is already happening. The provisions in the subdivision ordinance today ask us to collect those impact fees, but not how to calculate it, and you must have a study in order to actually ask somebody to pay a fee, because there has to be a connection between how much money you're spending, I mean, your capital expenditures, and then how much money you can ask as far as the impact fee. For wayfinding, wayfinding supports our services and businesses to communicate where amenities are and how to access them appropriately. And the town does not have adequate signage for parking or for direction. We've known that for a while now. It's in all of your plans going back years, and now we're going to start to address those. So with the next page, impact fees, this is, yes, this is right page. Impact fees support capital expenditures such as roads, public work equipment, police equipment, municipal buildings, parks, and recreational improvements. The impact fee study gives a maximum calculation. So you must do a study so you know the maximum amount you can charge people. And then you can choose to set a percentage of that maximum. So by law, you can charge this, but you don't have to charge that. You can do a percentage. You can do 50% or you can do 0% if you think it's appropriate. The amount of fee must be proportioned to fair share of the costs of improvements made necessary by the development and must not exceed the cost of the improvements. The fee cannot be imposed to address existing deficiencies, except where they are exacerbated by new development. So you can't fill a void that's happening, basically, that's not directly related to that new portion that's going on. So with wayfinding, the wayfinding study provides a template in consolidated style for signage and identity. They'll give us options, and you guys can choose, you know, what is the identity of our town, and it goes into our wayfinding. We are this type of town. This is how you can get to know us, basically. Communication puts visuals to the feeling of what downtown South Berwick is and can be. The study will allow the town to be consistent. Welcome signs can match directional signage and informational signage. So it's very consistent above the board to people know that it's the town telling you this information. It's not some random sign that's going on. The study allows us to pick a style and get the best location to place signage, which is the most important thing. You know, how far away from the parking lot should you post a signage if people are going down Portland Street? That's one thing that's really important to know. How many signs should you put up? Where should those go? How big should the sign be for visual if somebody's riding down in a car or a truck? All these things, we will know from the study. All right. Next page. So TIF funds are temporary. Funds must be used for approved projects or they are returned. So we, this is the money that you've already designated to do this, and so this is why we're putting this forward. This funding must comply with established town appropriation process with activities projects due completion before or by June 30th, 2056, when it comes to the transportation tip. Any tax increment revenues remaining in development program fund in excess of those estimated to be required to satisfy payment of approved project costs allowed in program must plus any related debt service. And so this is, you allocate those funds by that time, and if you don't use it, you will lose it. It goes back to the state. And so on the final page, the ask, staff has requested scopes from engineering firms for both studies. Their response back that we've gotten is basically, they vary wildly. One was $45,000 for impact fee study, and the next closest one we got was $105,000. So, and then a couple of them said, you know, we can't help you with this. And if we would help you with this, it would be the first time we're doing this. So we weren't interested in being first time, because they had no idea how to do it. Two scopes allow staff to begin immediately to address these identified needs that are in your plans. You set aside money to do this. You have, this is in your plans to do, and this is why we're bringing it forward. So staff, we seek authorization from the council for the town manager to sign the contracts for wayfinding study and an impact fee study from the previously allocated TIF funds. And I think that's it.
Thank you, DeFarlow.
Yep.
Just a couple of, just questions. I know later we're taking, will take action on this, you know, basically to address the question of seeking that authorization. But the quotes, like the range, like how is that selection process going to work in terms of picking the recent, like picking the firm, or whomever's going to complete the study, just given that?
And, and so the scopes have been consistent, but the quotes have been way inconsistent. And this is coming from an item line that is less than $100,000, and so if you're giving us a quote of $105,000, then it can't come from those funds. It's way out of our ability to do so. And then for the other ones, it's basically is who has provided the scope that has been consistently what we've asked for and hasn't been, has been demonstrated to act on a timeline that we actually work within. So some, some firms have come back and said, hey, yeah, we could do a wayfinding study, but you're on a two-year wait. So they've been kind of eliminated from that. And then other firms have basically said, you know, we can do your style, but we can't give you location. Or we can give you the location, but we can't give you style. And so we need both sides of those. So when a project comes before you all going like, hey, you know, we have these wayfinding signs. We need five of them. This is the cost of them, and this is where we're placing them in accordance with this study. It's quick and easy. Or if we don't have funds like this year, or next year, or the following year, this is always something that you can go back to going like, you know, I know this is not in the cards for right now. But we know when we do have the funds to do this, this is exactly when we want to place them, and this is the style we've chosen to do this. And you can either return to that style and change it up, but you would know the rubric of what you're doing. And right now, if we were to put signs up, then we would have very, very long conversations about what's the style, what's the color of that sign, how big the signs are, what are we, what are we doing with the signage? You know, you know, what materials are the signs made of? Are that, is that material going to last for the money that we're putting out? This information is all included in these studies, and so we'll have a quick and easy way that, you know, we can actually just go about it and put the signs in, get the money, and see some immediate improvements.
Great. It looks like, I was jumping ahead a little bit. It looks like later on in the actual article, we got all the dollar amounts in the specific firm, specific firms that you guys already vetted and stuff. So
Yep.
I apologize. The answer to my question was later.
That was okay.
Yeah.
Um. Anyone have any other questions or comments for DeFarlow?
I'll wait until later.
Thank you so much, DeFarlow.
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. Now we'll go on to public comment. I'll open it up to anyone who'd like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda. Maybe I'll just come up to the podium. I'll call you one at a time. Say your name and your address, and everyone should stick to roughly three-ish minutes. I'll manage to print. I'm sure Brad, you can first.
Hello. Um, so this is my R E years. You have copies of it. It's about the memorandum of agreement, the MOA 287G Task Force Model of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, and Department of Homeland Security, DHS, with local law enforcement agencies, L E A, and subsequently financial considerations for the L E A. The town council meeting of February 11th was the first public discussion of concerns around the reference subject. Back then, we had yet determined urgency in understanding implications of an MOA between ICE and local law enforcement agency. This changed as Wells Police Chief signed the first such agreement in Maine earlier this month, and now Wells citizens are seeking termination of this contract. There are numerous issues of concern in this MOA, yet my focus is on the financial implications to any town as stated in quote, "Item X Costs and Expenditures", page four of the revised March 7th, 2025 memorandum of agreement document. The lead paragraph states, quote, "Participating law enforcement agency personnel will carry out designated functions at the law enforcement agency's expense, including salaries and benefits, local transportation, and official issued material. Whether or not the local enforcement agency receives financial reimbursement for such costs through a federal grant or other funding mechanism is not material to this memorandum of agreement." Unquote. Clearly, costs are borne by the local enforcement agency, thus the town's budget when making an MOA agreement with ICE. More specifically, the MOA states ICE, quote, "ICE will provide instructors and training materials. The L E A is responsible for the salaries and benefits, including any overtime, all its personnel being trained or performing duties under this MOA, and of those personnel performing the regular functions of the participating L E A personnel while they are receiving training." Unquote. So the MOA requires mandatory training, yet does not state anywhere the number of hours required for training personnel, nor costs associated with additional updated training for them. The immense ambiguity of the potential financial burden posed on any town if it were to enter an MOA with ICE is astonishing. It makes no sense for local law enforcement agencies to resort to federal government's responsibilities at their expense, especially for us, as the South Berwick Police Department is already doing its work admirably in safeguarding our community inherent to the laws of state of Maine, excuse me.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Done. And I do see that I got somebody on the phone. We'll get you after. Those in the room.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to cover similar ground to, I'm sorry, Scott Landis, AD Academy Street, South Berwick, 03908. I'm going to cover some similar ground to what Brad just discussed. I've written a letter that I will submit afterwards in either print copy or I can send a PDF.
If you have a copy, you can get that to Tyne.
Okay. I do have a copy here that I'm going to read from. I'm here tonight to raise a serious concern among many of our fellow South Berwick residents. The focus of this concern is the delegation of authority from ICE, the Federal Bureau of Immigration and Customs Enforcement, to local police departments across the country. At last count, there were about 450 memorandums of agreement for ICE's 287G programs across the US. These entirely voluntary agreements allow ICE to deputize state and local police officers to perform immigration enforcement functions not normally part of their authority or responsibility. I, I know that this issue is on the radar of our town counselors and the manager as it's become increasingly local concern due to the adoption of that first and so far the only 287G agreement in Maine by our near neighbor community of Wells. I've been in touch with friends in Wells who shared their alarm at this development, and the issues they raise are equally worrisome to many of our neighbors here in town. There are several levels of concern that I want to highlight tonight. Most basically, many of us are deeply opposed to any collaboration with ICE, an agency that appears to have exceeded its legal authority in failing to apply required due process in the agency's deportation of hundreds of people to a foreign prison. This extreme immigration initiative is rooted in the administration's invocation of the Alien Enemies Act, a 1798 wartime authority that was last exercised during World War II. The administration's deportations to El Salvador under the Alien Enemies Act is under an injunction of the Supreme Court prohibiting further removal of detainees. And any participation of main communities in such questionable and likely illegal behavior should be avoided. These issues were raised by a group of Wells citizens in meetings that took place last week with the Wells Police Force, the Wells Police Chief, Select Board, and Town Manager. And here's a short list of the tangible ways in which their collaboration with ICE is deeply concerning to many South Berwick citizens as well. First, it leads directly to racial profiling, placing the immigrant community at risk, or frankly, any resident or visitor with a non-Caucasian racial background or foreign accent. It depletes public safety resources, as Brad explained, by expanding the focus of local police officers to an issue that's not part of their normal responsibility. And at the same time, it exposes the town to greater risk of liability if something goes wrong. Fundamentally, it undermines public respect and trust in local police, compromising that crucially important relationship. Wells residents shared these concerns with their local authorities, but many of those residents are not convinced that any contract with ICE, especially at this time, is in the best interest of the people of Wells. What's more, the lack of consultation between their police chief, select board, and the Wells Town Manager in undertaking this initiative remains very concerning to the Wells citizens I've been speaking to. This issue took a very different turn in Monmouth and Winthrop, Maine, two towns in Kennebec County. After those towns initially applied to the ICE program, local residents registered their disapproval in a meeting with the Monmouth Board of Selectmen, and the police chief withdrew the town's application. As reported in the Portland Press Herald, Chief Paul Furlan said, and I'm quoting here, "When I saw how this is dividing the community, it's not what I want. It's not what our officers want. Our community is our community. It's our home. The officers love their community, and we're not here to divide it." I'll conclude by saying that I hold considerable respect for our local police department led by Chief Ruger, as well as for members of our town council, several of whom I've known for many years. I would ask the council, Town Manager, and Police Chief tonight, are you considering any such engagement with ICE's 287G program? And if so, I urge you to carefully consider these risks and conduct your deliberations transparently with maximum public input, which is essential to maintaining the public confidence in our local government and police department that is, that we greatly value here in South Berwick. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next, we have, anyone else in the room? I'll let you keep running things. Okay. I'll turn it over to Sandy. If you can turn on your camera and introduce yourself and state your name and address.
Am I unmuted?
You can hear you, Sandy. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear Sandy?
I, am I unmuted?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I'm Sandy, a graffitosis, 548 Emery's Bridge Road. I want to just make a very brief personal statement that I would be extremely disturbed to have my town be complicit in any kind of roundup of people without due process. We saw how in Vermont, someone who was detained has, is still suffering under the consequences of that ICE arrest, I guess you would call it. And I think that any discussion that goes before the town council involves many people Goes before the town council involve many people because from people I've spoken with. I have learned that there is a lot of, um, resistance to the town, um, complying with this and. Um, I think about a term that I heard a few weeks ago, which I think you could apply here. It's the idea of anticipatory capitulation. We do not have to offer our assistance for something that a lot of us are truly disturbed by. So that's my comment tonight.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, given, given the comments, can we clarify by the public kind of what the process would be? If, if that were to ever be something that we would consider? Is there anyone else from, I'm sorry, I didn't ask again, is there anyone in the room or in the phone? I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay. So. I visited this issue in February when you were doing brought it up and brought by the council. Branded by. Legal and first and foremost, I could tell you. Well, Brad, the rest of the citizens and. Involved that I had long talks with Chief Ruger. This has not been considered, it's not being thought of. So one of the things we do in a town of South Berwick that we do well. Is we fix our problems, correct? So let's take a look at traffic. Traffic's been a problem for years ago, correct? So now we're getting streetlights to help fix our problems. And, and so on, so forth. This building needed renovation. We're fixing the problem, correct? In doing so, we don't make up problems to fix. There are no problems. Right? We're not running around looking for problems to fix. And talking with Chief Ruger and myself first off in discussions. This is not in consideration and not been talked about, we talked about it. Don't see any need for it, don't see any why we would have it or why we would be a part of. So I want, first, I think I want to put to bed to the public. And in February, we looked into this, we clearly drew the lines on the sand. Um, and Brad, the training is every officer forty hours. That's the total amount because I've already, I checked the ways on it. And every officer would have to be trained because of. You don't know which ones on duty when they call, right? So that is a huge financial expense to it. That's of all the problems that we have when we look at our. Police call background. Data. Uh, none, none of these are in, none of this pertains to that. So Chief is not, you know, pursuing this, it's not being looked at, it's not being considered, even though Wells did it. The second part is Wells is a little different from us. There are select void town manager type of government, so town council, town manager type of government. Or town manager, town council. So first off, it's an operational policy. Chief would have to bring it to me and I'd either have to say yes or no. And then if for some reason through all the cost of the training, the operations, all those things, because of all the. Ties to the financial factors. I would have to take that M O U contract and present it to the council in favor of the warning. Not for, which at one point, at that point, the council could do multiple things. They could vote pass, they could vote down a public hearing. They could vote it down, so forth. But. Rest assured to the citizens of South Berwick, there is no, we have not thought of this, we have not, we haven't discussed it one day. In a, a operational meeting. It was very, it made very clear to me, we don't have these problems, we don't see a need for this. If a federal agency, ATF, FBI, CCI, NCIS, or any of the others come in. And they request our assistance, law enforcement assistance on the normal routine law enforcement duties. If they have a warrant, they're pursuing. Somebody for, our police department is required by law to help them. That's, if they have a warrant, they're pursuing someone. So Brad, I think, made the statement, not normally within the scope of the duty, because it's not normally within the scope of our duties. Within our codes and charter, it would have to be approved by me first and then approved by the council or public meeting, the public hearing. But I can rest assured you this is not on our future, not on our plates, not in discussion. Not being planned, we're not talking about it behind the secret doors. Are assumed that we have in the closet, you can come check the closet, you can come check my desk, my computer. We're not discussing, it's, it's, hasn't been an issue. Have we discussed traffic enforcement? We have. Later on, you'll see that in the last two weeks, we've had a hundred and fifty some on traffic stops. And no traffic, that's good. But rest assured, and I understand people are nervous and excited about this, and absolutely they can be and they should be, but. Here in South Berwick, we, we have. Calmer heads have prevailed based on our needs and our operations and that's not going to go. And if they keep knocking on the door, I think we probably have the same opportunity to tell them. It's not one of them. We have a lot more greater needs that we're trying to address. How's that, Kim, is the question on him here?
Yeah, I think it's helpful to just clarify what the process is for the public, given the questions. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else they wanted to say about public comment? Council, any response, questions?
No, other than to just back up and clarify Kim's one point of if the agency, if a federal agency. Comes to our police force with an active legal warrant. They will support, they have to support. Chief Ruger has said they will, that's part of what they are sworn to do. That's their normal, that is their normal duties. As far as the rest, it's been asked, answered, we went through, we did. Hopefully it puts the mind to rest to people that have written emails. I appreciate everybody asking the questions because it keeps it up front. But again, um, thank you for the explanation, Tim.
Alright, and that wraps up public comment. I'll get into new business. Um, number one, we have Spring Hill liquor license renewal.
Madam Chair, I move we renew the liquor license for Spring Hill. Their business is in good standing. There are no issues reported from the police chief and the dealer's funeral roster.
Second, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any division? All those in favor approving the Spring Hill liquor license renewals? Aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And moving on to the Spring Hill special amusement.
Madam Chair, I move we. Forgo with the public hearing that we still have not fixed in our charter. Um, based on past practice to renew special amusement permits for Spring Hill. Um, again, this is some good standing, no issues reported by this fund.
Second, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the Spring Hill special amusement permit, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Uh, moving on to, um, new business number three. Um, this week is, or sorry, no, not this week, May fourth through May tenth. Um, will be the fifty sixth annual professional municipal clerks week. This was initiated in nineteen sixty nine. By the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada and fifteen other countries. In nineteen eighty four, President Reagan officially declared Municipal Clerks Week the first full week of May. This week is a time of celebration and reflection on the importance of the clerk's office. Um, and so I'm going to, um, go ahead and read this proclamation in its entirety and then we can make a motion to accept. Um, the fifty sixth annual professional municipal clerks week's week. Week proclamation. And before I read it, I will just say thank you to Tanya and all of our wonderful municipal clerks in our office. Um, I guess thank you ahead of time, a little bit early, but. Um, alright, I'll go ahead and read this. So this is the proclamation for the fifty sixth annual professional municipal clerks week. Um, which will be May fourth through the tenth of two thousand twenty five. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital, vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies. And agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it must be, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, we, South Berwick Town Council, do recognize the week of May fourth through the tenth, two thousand twenty five. As professional municipal clerks speak. And we further extend our appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Tanya and Busso. Her staff and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Due to this day, April twenty second, two thousand twenty five, after we motion, we will sign it. Um, so. I will go ahead and make a motion to pass the proclamation as read.
Sure.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Thank you all for listening to me read that. Thank you, Tanya and your, your, your team. Um, we'll celebrate you in a few weeks. Um, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Alright, um, next we have. Um, an item to process, um, board member appointments. So the council met earlier this evening and executed session to conduct a few interviews for. The downtown revitalization committee as well as the planning board. Um, and we're going to go ahead and take action on those appointments. I will go ahead and first and make a motion to appoint.
Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you.
I move we. Move those potential, what's up?
Oh, I was going to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead. No, never mind.
Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Dan Kenny to the downtown revitalization committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Second, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Uh, our next candidate that we were supposed to schedule this evening, um. Uh, must have had a scheduling conflict, um, for the historic district commission. Um, that was Lisa Flynn. We'll get in touch with her and see when we can reschedule. And then the last one was Ryan Crosby for the, an alternate for the planning board. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we table, um, the action for Ryan Crosby onto the planning board for our next meeting when we have a full council.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, yeah? Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. So we will take a bad appointment at our next meeting, which will be May. May thirteenth. Alright, um. That's our board member appointments. Then moving on to new business number four, scheduling interview with potential board members. Um, so we received another application for the downtown revitalization committee from Jacklin Busque and. We're also now looking to reschedule an interview with Lisa Flynn. Um, and I suggest for the council that we try to schedule those at six o'clock on May thirteenth. But. Does that work for everybody? Okay, um, alright, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we, um, schedule an interview with Jacklin Busque on May. Thirteenth, Tuesday at six o'clock P M Town Hall for downtown revitalization. And try to see if Lisa Flynn can join us at six fifteen P M on the same day for the historic district commission.
Madam Chair, very welcome. I'm just curious on how, I don't know if we want to cable that. Next interview because it'll be, again, Kenny, you are from downtown revitalization, really?
But we have a full board now, like they are. I think, um. We still want to schedule it because we, the council kind of discussed some, some things we touched on, talked about with that thing, that's all. We're, we're good. Thank you.
There is also two alternate positions, correct, for the downtown implementation?
Thanks. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to schedule those interviews at six and six fifteen ahead of our next meeting. Um, so if we get a second?
Sure.
Second, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Oh, quick.
Yep.
Just dotting I's, crossing T's.
Thank you.
Um, Jacklin's applicant signature is missing from the bottom of our application. If we could just get her to sign that. Obviously doesn't interfere with the interview, but just formality purposes.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to schedule those interviews. All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And, um, we are now at new business number six, for those keeping track. Um, this is pertaining to ale wives and blueback herring. Um, so at our last, not at our last council meeting, but at our, a council meeting in early March, and this is an annual thing that the council typically does. We made a motion to authorize the taking of ale wives and blueback herring out in South Berwick out of the Salmon Falls River. That's a thing we have done every year forever and ever and ever, as long as I have.
Based on the U N H study that the numbers are different.
Yep, and we have since found out that apparently, um, so apparently on April seventh, the state of Maine Department of Marine Resources reached out and sent a letter to the town notifying us that. Um, quote, because river herring in the Salmon Falls River has not been determined to have achieved a sustainable population size. And we have, and have not been approved by the Atlantic State's Marine Fisheries Commission for Fisher, both recreational and commercial river. Herring fishery for ale wife and blueback herring are closed for two thousand twenty five. That is all context. For basically, we now need to now make a motion to rescind our previous action because there are not enough fish to be caught.
Show move.
Um, all those in favor of rescinding our motion on March eleventh. Um, authorizing the taking of ale wives and blueback herring in South Berwick for the twenty twenty five harvest. Susan, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero.
Yeah. Sorry about that. We didn't know.
We're doing the best with the information we got.
Maybe just have to correct it because over there, if they go to repeating law enforcement.
Yep.
And conjunction with very, very sources of salt water, someone can't say, oh, the town's law we don't do it, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, question, we did have a constituent reach out and where this was a change. Are we going to do any kind of signage posting?
But I didn't want to do it till. Till you made this action. I have tomorrow, but yeah. So I just didn't want to do it till, till then because then I, then I swear to God, I'd have ten people following me and. Well, we, Townsend, we could do it. I have a state said, you go to the Townsend, I probably would have called you.
Okay, anything else on the ale wives and blueback topic? Okay, let's move on to new business number seven, wind waste and innovations contract. Tim, this is, this is all you.
Uh, Chairman of the council, this is, I've been working on this for. Uh, since last October, um, we've negotiated all the numbers now for Penny. Right where they need to go, you can see where it is, exactly what it is. Um, the contract is our basic standard hauling contract. Um, we made it up, they don't make it up. We, the one, same one they use on North Berwick. That we've used before previously for the seller. So that's just it, I just need your approval to sign it.
So you just need a motion for us to?
Yeah, allow me to sign it.
Have you seen the contract?
Yeah, I, just, we have a, we just have an item in our, our packet, but we, we don't have the actual contract. I don't know.
You didn't get it? Okay, well, okay, yeah.
So we, so we cable this for next time, after we have a chance to see the contract or?
Be denied sign.
Or be denied sign?
Because I'm not going to read the contract either way, Tim, to be honest with you, because.
I can, I have a deck, pass around, go do what you want. That's, or it just, so it just what it does in the sense that you look at it, you'll see like on page. It says the M S W, which is municipal solid waste, construct, construction grade. Forty odd C, C A D containers, metal, it just sets the exact rate for five years, but just want to look at it. I'm trying to get it, trying to get it to them.
Yeah.
There's another copy.
I know how much time has been spent on traffic.
It's. You'll see the rates. Um, the only other bidder in this process was Casella and they were much higher. So, and, and there is no, the, the problem is there's no. Nobody to do it. Short of us buying our own truck and paying for our own wages, which may come to that at some point, but. Um, at this point, it's probably the. You know, everybody in the consumer, the conglor room that we had, the thirteen town. Everybody with the exception of the two towns who have pickup, a car pickup. By Casella, I'm going to win ways. Windways gave us much better rates, so. It's really not like there's a, a ton that we can negotiate with this. We drive, you know, we, we did change some stuff. I did negotiate lower rate on metals. And white goods, we gotta change, drop that down, like sixty, sixty or seventy dollars because. And it's your choice. I, I guess you can wait if you want, and it ain't going to take back to July first, but. I just want to get that off my desk because I still get the eagle main one to.
Okay. What is it, and how are you feeling? We can.
Anybody have anything certain or any question, but I'm certain it's a standard. All in contract, it's better, a little bit better than our previous contract with Casella.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly, Tim.
Honestly, Tim, as I was looking at it, I was gonna say, thank you very much because you said, you know, we've been working on this. And we actually have. I've, I recall you numerous times coming in front of us and I really appreciate that. And I mean that with all sincerity. And that's type of stuff that I personally really like to see. You're working on it and it's like, jeez, yes, you are. So, thank you. If I'm, if that's it. I would like to, I, I would like to put this on next. Next, uh, meeting's agenda, so then it could be in public noted in the public.
Absolutely.
And we could also potentially get published comment wherever it be intended.
Yeah. Sure.
Totally fair. I'll go ahead and make a motion, um, that we, um. Cable, um, new business number seven, wind waste innovation contract, um, for our next meeting on May thirteenth.
Oh, I'll second that.
And for discussion is just make sure that, um, if we can pop to your, getting the left time, having the. Or, or make.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I don't know why I should have gone back. It's, I don't know. After last, my desk and somewhere near my desk and our desk could show on it.
There's not going on, okay. Alright, we have a motion on the table to table this.
Okay.
Did somebody second?
I seconded it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. We'll chat about that next time.
I, I would encourage the council, if you can find an alternative to this. Before the next meet, please present it to me. It's gonna be a cost savings of some sort. Please do.
Madam Chair, just on this.
Yeah.
I, in my mind, I'm, I'm like. I have every bit of confidence in myself. I just, if I were sitting on the public, I would be like, what the heck did you do, Jeff? Why didn't you pass that without reading it?
No, no issue. My mistake, but I'm seeing you was, wasn't attached to the. What would attach?
Did I retract my statement? I'm not gonna read it.
All I was gonna say, Jeff, that my subliminal panic of, oh my God, a document, I didn't get to read the whole thing out. So, thank you for that, Jeff.
Alright, um, new business number eight, uh, to project wayfinding. So DeCarlo, uh, presented to us earlier and then the whole, uh, thought process behind the wayfinding and then had. Um, studies that are being proposed. Uh, so just to remind everybody, um, in our approved FY twenty-five pumpkin town tip budget, uh, it includes forty-five thousand dollars for wayfinding in town by signage. Uh, this project is in line, the, the plan as, uh, as well as the downtown revitalization plan, uh, as Carlo presented, uh. We're looking at for wayfinding, uh, we have a proposed contract with Wright Pierce, uh, for twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars to conduct that wayfinding signage. Uh, design services study, I guess I would say. Um. Did I miss anything? Taking that up? Anyone have any questions or discussion on this?
Probably a question.
Aye.
I think the fourth joint, the TIF, uh, budget that was approved last year is in there, and the two lines that are pink are the two line items that we're talking about. Uh, for these questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions or anything for anybody on the wayfinding?
Madam Chair.
Go for it.
So, as a member of the former downtown revitalization committee, I know that this is actually listed as a priority action item. And should be addressed within one to six months, uh, according to our plan. And we all know how much we want to keep that book off of the shelf and actually. Implement these actions. However, I do have a couple of concerns. Um. Under their assumptions of Wright Pierce, it says wayfinding signage locations will be determined based on existing layout of downtown area. We have two traffic lights coming into town. Most wayfinding and signage is put in intersections or at town lines are the typical locations. So if we go ahead and do this study right now, we are looking at big changes to our downtown. Which the signage that this company comes up with might not even work with the changes that are made to our downtown. With, um, the reconfiguration of the downtown. So I absolutely agree that this needs to be done. It was discussed thoroughly in the, in the downtown revitalization committee. However, I feel like we're out of sequence with doing this now without having other things done first. Uh, so that was one of my concerns. Um, my, a couple of my other concerns is. Other two assumptions that were listed, um, by the potential company is that parking area maps or figures are not included in this cost. Well, when parking is a huge part of this wayfinding and signage, but it's not included in the bid that they offered. Are we going to have to pay extra for that if we believe it's a necessity? Let me finish all my complaints and then you come and tell me, you know? So, um, and then also public meetings with town are not included. We are huge on getting the town involved with decision making and, um, just decision making. Uh, my other concern was, um, after. Scroll down. When I read, um, all of the schedule of terms and conditions of the contract. Under the client's responsibilities, it sounds like with this company. We would be doing most of the footwork and they would just be putting numbers into a plan. I don't think we're getting the best bang for our buck with this proposal. Um, and I know we're limited with few and far between of companies that can do this. Um, or offer it at a reasonable rate, but. With it just being bad timing, that's a great, um, reason to just put this on the back burner for right now.
Please come up.
Sure.
Answer any question.
Sure, uh, so just a couple things, um, the intersection project.
He's good.
The intersection project, um, is, is based off a three, three step process, the planning, um, that has been completed in two thousand twenty-two. They're doing engineering now, and then they do, uh, final engineering and implementation, but everything is based off that two thousand twenty-two plan. And does not deviate from that plan. Um, and this is what, something that I've already confirmed with D O T. Because I've tried to change some things with that, that will advocate for changes, and they said. You can't change it. The, the plan has been set by two thousand twenty-two. Um, that is one of the documents that this company is a part of this wayfinding fee study actually takes into account. And if you look at the two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two study, it gives you the exact locations of intersections and signage. And everything that's gonna happen as a part of our intersection project, and so that's actually, um, already included. Um, the second point was the parking. No, they are not actually doing our parking. That actually is being done by S and P D C. Um, and that, and the reason why that is, is because it, the extra cost that it would, it would do for. An engineering company to actually just digitize our parking spaces is way out of scope of what S and P D C, um. Has already agreed to do for us. And so that's already, uh, that's why we're currently working with S and P D C to do our parking spaces. And then once they get that, that's one of the documents that goes into this wayfinding fee study. And so this is actually. A way to reduce the cost that we would be paying for a wayfinding fee study by using our other things and, and, um. Our other partners who, who can do that work for a lot less expensive. And then lastly, um, because this is only a study and this is not an, a, an, an adopted, uh, form. Um, usually, uh, the, uh, public, um, meeting is not included in just the study. This is the same thing as if you were doing an economic study. It doesn't say that we're actually putting things right here, and when signage does come a thing because of the cost. Associated with signage, it would need to be in a public process and you guys would have to say, okay, uh, we're okay with, we're putting the signs here, here, or we want. A public feedback on putting a sign here, here. They just give us, um, basically the reasoning behind, uh, behind doing that. Um, and I bring up this example of the police station. There's a sign when you're at, going towards the police station that says, please be aware. You know, you need to, uh, this is, uh, uh, first responders returning here. Now, M D O T looking at that, that information saying, that signage is, is too close to that intersection. We have a standard that if you're putting signage up, then it needs to be at least this amount of space out there. And that's what this engineering study, what wayfinding would do is saying, listen, to be consistent with, with this. You need to be at least this far away from this intersection or at least this far away from this turn in order to be compliant and for people to be able to see that. And so it gives us just information that we can then use to do in placement of the signs. So, uh, that's kind of those two things right there. Um, I definitely understand the concern out of, out of, out of sequence, um. But this is one of the things that because it's such an immediate need that I thought it was important just to bring before you all. But if you all think that this is not the right time, okay, yeah, it's not the right.
You have a question? It's your question. Um, I do.
Yeah.
Um, so. You, what you said is that in twenty twenty-two, we kind of locked, sort of locked in kind of what the, what things are gonna look like out here from like. The, the, from an engineering perspective, correct?
Okay.
And, and that, when, when this reads. Based on existing layout of downtown area, like what I'm hearing from you is that that is actually including that goes, even though that's not where intersection looks like currently, but like the plans for that.
It's, it's to prove, uh, all, uh, all the, your, your planning studies are part of that. And. This, the reason why the cost is so low, about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars, because it's the same firm that does, uh, downtown revitalization plan. Um, where, and another firm coming in would be a. A, a factor higher, um, to put very bluntly. Um, and because we've done all those studies and those studies are already included into the work that. They've already done, this is why that cost is so low. Um, I mean, that's, that's the only way I can explain that.
They have all the backup then. They have.
Correct.
Available.
Yeah.
This is future. The wayfinding signage is future for downtown. Where it's gonna be.
Yes.
Right now, I, because I have the same concerns, Melissa, of why are we looking at signs when we're changing it? Thank you for clarifying that for me.
I, is it fair to say that the wayfinding study, really the output of that is gonna be like guidance for us?
Correct, yes.
It's not gonna be like one here, it's gonna be, here's some, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is the area, if you were doing signage here, this is where you want to put it. Uh, the most important thing from that study and where the bulk of the cost comes from is actually the design work. Is the, the design work itself was twenty-five thousand dollars, the placement was eight hundred dollars. And so that's the cost breakdown between those two. Um, and I actually, I, I went back to them going like, hey, you've given us a whole. Design scope, but we also would need information on placement of these, of these signs as well. Um, and so I do not foresee, even if you took out the, the portion of the, the location, you would save about, about eight hundred dollars.
And then you said, the parking stuff is specifically not included in this contract with Wright Pierce because we're covering that elsewhere.
Correct, yes. Um, right now, S and P D C is digitizing all of our, our parking areas and what that does is twofold. It can go into these plans that are being done with pedestrian plan and what have you and, and wayfinding, um, but it also allows us to do further analysis. So let's say if you have a business downtown that has, doesn't have direct parking right in there, um, but you create a new provision that says, well, if. Uh, public on-street parking is available and within this distance, then you might, can qualify for a waiver. This is in future terms. This gives us the data to say, well, this is location. If you put a buffer around that, this is how many public parking spaces around that. And so then you can make that decision if you wanted to implement a waiver or some, uh, something like that, yeah.
DeCarlo, in all of your, um. In your history of work with Laven, have you ever worked with this company before that we are extending or that is looking to, for us to accept a proposal about?
Yes, uh, so I've worked with them, um, they've been on the applicant side, and so it's more me. Uh, checking them, um, to make sure that they are consistent with the regulations and everything. And I can say that they've been a, a great applicant, um, and, and they're, they're very receptive to the, the public sphere. Um, on the, on the planning side, they, um, from the documents that I've seen, they've been, um, doing a great job of being responsive of. This is what you, you're looking at of here and meeting those needs. Um, you know, it, for this type of study. Because this type of study is. It's mostly going on, hey, this is the format of your signing, and this is the type of signing that will. Be able to stand the test of being outside. That's the information that we would have to go out and search for, um, for a, a. A, a, a long period of time where this company has already implemented some of that signage, so they can give us the background on saying, hey. You know, I understand that, you know, the manufacturer says it, this will last from five to seven years, but the lifespan of this is about three years. And so you may want to choose this different material rather than this one to save on cost.
Any other questions or comments for DeCarlo on the wayfinding contract? With Wright Pierce.
So with, with money coming from the tip. You, I, my mind is always like, how can we, um. Quantify that as being able to put money back into South Borough, meaning. Economic development.
Correct.
Is that? In my mind, there's a, there's a quantifiable. Way to get there, right? You could go to businesses and, and say, hey. So after signage, signage impacted business, I mean, am I way out of my field, can, would we be able to say? The signage was helpful.
Yeah, yeah. So in a general sense, you would be able to say this signage is helpful. Um. In an economic sense, you, you would have to do a lot of assumptions based on, you know, the business class and how much. They are currently losing for not having signage, um, and then doing a real world analysis of, well, how much? Have you increased since the signage has been in and how much is that, um, attributable, attributable to that exact, you know, signage? And so there would be a way to do that. Um, that's a, that's a different type of, of that economic, um, analysis to do, um, but there is a way, yes, yeah.
And. And I was going through again, just trying to understand what type of signage. So.
Correct.
I'd be seeing, um, a poverty sign on a, on a post that was designed by, by this, or is it for? Parking, rail trail, blah, 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 you know, that type of stuff, or is it for actual businesses?
And so it's not for actual businesses, it's for, um, directional signage. So you may have seen on. Other towns that they do have the name of the businesses that way or this way. And so if you were going to do that type of sign, right? How would that actual sign look like? You know, are we talking about how, how big is it, how big is the width need to be for people to recognize it? A quarter mile down the road, so they know that they need to take the turn if they're interested in going that way. So they do that signage, they also would include any type of, um, like parking signage, so not only the parking when you're driving down the street, parking this way. But signage outside of the parking lot that designated as a parking space. Um, also does welcome signs, so welcome to South Borough or, uh, uh. Welcome to downtown South Borough, all that to make sure that the language is consistent. You know, they're not all gonna look the same, but you want to have that language be consistent that you know, oh, the welcome sign looks like this. And the direction signage is in that same style, so I can be sure that I need to go this way for. Menantable lots and, and public lots, or I, you know, this is a business that's in town that's, that's predominant and I need to go this way. People have seen that it's actually, you know. Important for me to know that these businesses are this way or this way, like orchards and, you know, and infogrees and, you know, all, all that type of stuff. Yeah. One big thing about this is that you guys get to pick colors because that's very important. I, I know it doesn't seem important. But is it, is it extremely important, um, because it becomes the, basically the identity, and this is what this study is doing. It's allowing you to choose the identity of signage for your town.
I'm sorry, but on that, how much of this is us and how much is it is the new league committee, right? Like, what's the blend and how does that?
So. And so they will give recommendations based on now that they're being stood up, because this, this process started before we even. Got even anywhere near a portal, uh, looking for this type of things. But now that they're standing up. The idea is to send this directly to the downtown revitalization, and then they make recommendations for you guys to choose, okay, we're okay with this. And so to have that process fully transparent going, okay, they got these three, three options, and from these three options, they recommended this. They, they bring that recommendation to you all, you all sign off, this is, this is gonna be our identity now. And so that's, it's working kind of how you design it to work and working with them, so I'm not coming before you in a two-hour setting. And getting you to the, to decide on science. I will, because I, you know I will.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for DeCarlo and we?
Good.
Play on. No?
I, I do have, I have another thing that I want clarification on, not necessarily from DeCarlo.
Same. Yeah.
I, I just didn't want to move and start to do a vote before we have a chance to talk about it ourselves, I guess, so.
So you, so you're saying we're not, you're not ready to vote on this? We have other questions?
I have.
Yeah. Go for it.
So.
But DeCarlo can sit down.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You might be back up soon.
I apologize, um. And I, I want to better understand, um. Melissa's statement, honestly, I, about the, uh, outer sequence, I'm not, I'm not wrapping that. Through my head now, I want to better understand that from you, if, if that's okay, I.
Yep, absolutely. So take into consideration. Yep, absolutely, so take into consideration with the renovation of the town hall. Would you do the landscaping outside before you did the work on the inside of the town hall? Because what you do outside is probably going to be disturbed by the work that's being done inside with all the construction trucks and stuff. So same point of if we have a plan or we like for. Wayfinding, wayfinding signage before we have a full design of what the intersections are going to. We're gonna be doing rework, that, you know, that was my concern of being out of sequence. It's almost like get the intersections done first and then do the, the signage. Because sequentially, that makes sense to me if, you know, how that should be done.
Thank you.
I think though. I think though what's important is that this is the output of this is not put a sign here, 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 and here. The output of this is, these are the types of, keep me honest, these are like the types of signs you should put in this general location. Is, so it's more guidance around that, it's not, it, it, the part of the output of the study is not determining where we're gonna put signs. And what signs we're putting where yet, is that accurate?
And we're not buying the signs yet either.
So, yeah, so you're not, and the output of this is not, you're actually placing signs anywhere. But this is this information of, hey, you know, from these plans, one, style. This is give you options on, hey, now we know what type of signage we're gonna put in each sort of situation. And, you know, this is if you were gonna put a sign here, you know, during this time period. If like Portland Street, like the upper part of going out of town Portland Street, where would you place that, you know? Um, one thing I do want, want to, to put in mind is that when you're talking about signage. Yeah, obviously, if this ground is gonna be disturbed, you're not gonna place a sign there before it gets disturbed. It, you, but, you know, you're not gonna do that because we're having money. And, uh, a part of that, that, um, intersection project is designed to also put signage there. But the question, uh, the intersection, uh, project is what type of signage, what type of signage are you putting up? They're, they're directing you where to put the location as a part of intersection project, but they're not saying anything about what type of signage are you gonna use. And so you're gonna go into that, that, um, end portion of that, um, phase three of actual implementation. And the state is gonna dig up everything and they're gonna say, okay, what type of signage do you want? And if you don't have a, an agreement of what signage you're gonna use, you're gonna be left on, these are our defaults. If you can't make a decision, this is the default that we're gonna use. Elsewhere in town that we do not have active projects, they are gonna give us some ideas of where you can place those. Like I would say everywhere else downtown that doesn't have an active project, down near accounting house, um, up near Portland Street. These are all areas that really do need additional signage. And there's no idea where exactly you need to place that, that signage. And so we need some idea, okay, if we're gonna place the sign down here, this is the location that you should place that sign. Um and at some point, everything changes, right? We know that their development in town is going to ebb and flow and, and everywhere. But at, at some time, you know, you're gonna have to, uh, decide, okay, now's the right time to actually put signage down. And then be okay with that twenty years from now, uh, we need to change the signage from our location and then, and do that. And so I definitely hear the concerns about like timing and scope, and I'm definitely open to all that. And, um, and changing the time of, of this wayfinding study or not even, or even asking them to take out the locations. If, if it pleases, um, the council, um, I just put this forward because I just knew it was immediately.
Where are we at? Do we, are we ready then?
No, I just have one comment and not pertaining to.
Can, can I go some there?
Um, the reason I asked DeCarlo if he has had experience with working with this company. Um, because I did work with them for a year personally on the downtown revitalization committee and. No, I haven't had a trend lightly on this, um. I don't know how to share my opinion of my experience. Wanted to defend and make despair.
Lend you careful your own work.
That's what I'm saying, so I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not sure. I understand that it's good to have a familiarity with a company and to continue to working with them. But I'm, I'm not sure, um, this might be the right time.
Any other papers on discussion where we make a motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
Totally relevant to your issue, but I did have a meeting with the business owner earlier this week, um, actually last week, you know. They have a business on Main Street and they came in complaining about the signage, they wanted to put up signs for their business. Or unpacked them on Main Street and said, whatever they pack in the fifteen minutes. So their business, people are in and out. He said, the problem is some of the other businesses, they come in and they pack and they sit for two hours and tie up our packing spots and then no one puts them in. I said, well, we can't do that, we have been two whole packing signs on Main Street, we're not gonna put up fifteen minute signage, they're only wayfinding something. They said, well, then how about a sign on Main Street, so they can use three municipal packing lot and the post office, you don't have anything there, they don't go there. So lots of times, I'm empty every night, instead of tying up my packing spots, my customer. So I said, again, looking at wayfinding and, okay, and I said, we, we, but we're not only put up fifteen minutes, so. For whatever it is or it's not, nothing, it has nothing to do with this, but just that there are issues that exist.
Thank you, Tim, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion, um, to allow the town manager to sign a contract with right here. For twenty-five thousand eight hundred for wayfinding signage to nine services to be paid for from the public account, ten to start.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on a motion? All of the favors, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
No.
John?
Aye.
I, motion pass is three, one. And we will move on to the TIP project impact, we said a similar-ish conversation. Um, so we just had, or this is for the impact study, uh, who's that, DeCarlo talked about during presentation section. Um, and it seems like we have, um, got an application from Tischler Bees. These, Tischler Bees, Bees, for forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for an impact fee study. Um, and the most, the, or sorry, the, the business on the table for the council is for us to, um, allow the town manager to sign a contract. Um, again, our FY twenty-five transit, just transit district TIP budget does include a hundred thousand dollar line item for downtown improvements. Um, this is a line of plan to add impact fees to the town in short-term timeline, that was an outcome of our comprehensive plan. And this company, Tischler Bees, um, has especially doing impact fee studies. And once we have, um, formally contracted, it's in house for future years to come. Uh, so it's often you get something that will help us continue to do this, um, going right even beyond this initial window with working in the company. Question for DeCarlo or Tim from the council or comments?
I do have a question, at the end of the proposal, it says this proposal is, is, um, extended to us for a hundred and twenty days. Cause it was dated on November twenty-second of twenty twenty-four, um, it's been a hundred and fifty-one days since this is issued, is it still even valid?
I had, I cast this to you, yeah, I wanna do all of this.
Yeah. Uh, they said that they were honoring the price, um, we, we know just things have changed since I, I've gotten those. Um, and the reason why it's been so long is because I've been looking for others, um, to give you good options. Um, so they said that they were honoring the price, um, if they do not honor the price, I'll be right back before you with any changes. That, um, they, that may occur.
DeCarlo, is there any concern that this company is not local? I see by the proposal that they've offered, most of their work has been done in the Midwest or even along the coast of the West. Um, their office is in, their principal office is in Maryland, and then they also have an Idaho office. Do you see that as like a minor road blockage with the communication or even having, um, a. Good knowledge of like the laws in our areas, some of that?
Um, not with this company directly, because they've done, uh, the, a similar, uh, study for Portland. Um, so they are familiar with state regulations when it comes to impact fees. Um, that was my, my first questions, uh, going, you know, hey, you know, what are your experience with this, this area? Um, and they've done another one in Maine as well, um, and where impact fees concerned, it's not so much of the local as much as the state regulations. Um, and this gives us a, uh, maximum cost, because it's not setting our exact impact fees, but giving us the calculations. Um, that's why my concerns are, are minimal with that. Um, they have been very responsive, they've actually been the most responsive out of all of our applicants between the two plans. Um, that may be because they're selling us a product, um, and I'm very aware of that. People, salesmen are a lot more responsive than, you know, uh, other people. Um, but I'm, I'm fully confident that I can keep them to, uh, to letter their contracts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions?
Just for clarity, this was the one where we, in order for us to move forward with impact fees. In our town, in order to, or whatever we do, we need the study to give us the guidance or whatever, that's what you're like.
Correct, it has to be a connection or a nexus between the capital expenditures that you're currently doing and have been doing over the average of the last five years. Um, has to have a relation of what you're gonna charge people with impact fees, um, if you are going to charge impact fees. And so this gives us a maximum, and then you get to decide, you know, from that maximum, this is how we're actually gonna do it at our local level. Um, this is not something that says that you're absolutely going to implement this impact fee. But it gives us the study to say legally, this is your maximum that you can do that if you want to, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, um, any questions?
So trying to find the study now, so we can, we did a quick, rapid study. Um, before we locked the rest, we're having back December, January, November, whenever, when we have a new discussion. Uh, what would impact be look like based on a certain criteria, a certain number? And I think we picked, I think it was, we, we're gonna do bedrooms or something, we did bedrooms. And we just did the housing development since twenty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
And we, based on just that, like, and that's all hypothetical, right? That's not, it came up with it, we've put a received over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that base since. Doesn't impact taxpayer, benefits to taxpayer, because, so eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars we bought, we buy.
Correct. Correct, you, your current provision now, today, in your subdivision ordinance, uh, directs you to collect impact fees. But legally, you can't do so without actually that legal nexus and how much to charge people.
So we both knocked it up, there was, how many developments was there? Eight hundred and ten thousand.
Hundred and twenty lots.
Hundred and twenty watch, eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
So. A napkin calculation or?
Or, yeah, it's not exact, it's napkin, but this is going on, uh, similar impact fees from.
And, and that's not other new problems, right? So add that in, and, and you don't have to do impact fees, I'm just trying, trying, you know, when you look at managing municipalities. We look at ways to fund resources to help offset the tax base, continuous test is one, impact fees is another, just another option.
The way we had done it was three people per lot was an average of two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars per person for that first year.
Um, and so for my, I mean, I've heard of impact, of impact fees that I don't know anything about. I was hearing them in regards to, um, in talking about, um, how. Force from in our town is being cut to mid-foot in housing, stuff like that, and impact fees would help. Maybe potentially, I don't know, help conservation as well, or is it only fire trucks?
No, 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 you can, you can make it for anything you want.
Yes.
You can make it for conservation, I don't think you could fund it from the town council's summer vacation project. But, but, yeah, so a lot of communities to, to walkways, conservation projects and recreation and playground. And, and followed up by C I P, public safety side, they put in like three or four categories. And some money goes here and some money goes there, so it's all totally becomes whatever folks want to move. So it's how we got the land for the ball fields and agamans. They're allowed to build agamans by putting aside that land to be used for public recreation. Old Mills, the same way, that's why that field is in Old Mills, that was part of the development back then, building that, that land that we set aside for public recreation.
Correct, and right now you require, um, for any subdivision, ten percent of that land to be reserved for recreation. Um, and in lieu of doing that, uh, ten percent, um, the planning board can waive that ten percent requirement, um, or fee in lieu. Which is an impact fee.
Would help us a lot of it.
Correct, yeah, so in that instance, if the, the development was inside the downtown and there is no land to give. Then you could, I ask, you could require them to pay impact fee. And that way, the services that they're gonna be receiving, or as, uh, the, you know, community center and recreation, they're actually paying into that.
Thanks for the clarity.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? I'll go ahead and make a motion to allow the town manager to sign a contract with Tischler Bees for forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for an impact fee study. Be paid with hands that TIP district.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, all of us in favor of a motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I, motion pass is four zero. That takes care of all of our regular business, I will hand it to Tim and Jen for the manner of these report.
Thank you, Val, cheer, the highway department, uh, spring cleanup along the fence line, saw irrigation preparations of the ball fields.
Fantastic, huge thank you, Jay, for bringing it.
Uh, checked all the stormwater basins, oh come on, you're leaving them the best path, have a good night. Um, roadside gnawing, and then the tablets on Emery Ridge Road, the hoop is broke, it's carrying faster than anticipated. Uh, we had to drop, we run it back down to thirteen tons. Um, and they're gonna start replacing this fall called Tongue Emery Ridge Road. Police department had three arrests, eight traffic accidents, and in two weeks, the traffic enforcement officer had a hundred and seventy-seven. Traffic stops, two weeks, people now recognize there are a lot of blue lights and it's so thorough. You have something, Val?
Was there something going on today?
At the middle school, they had a news, should look at the bulletin.
Cause there were cut like ball during an hand shirt.
They had a police, they had a police training event at the middle school on that way to me.
Thank you.
I was driving by a mall going, hey, baseball.
Quite about, had twenty-two calls in the last week, hundred and twenty-six year to date. Arrow all day, um, Easter day, assisting, they assisted a dump, like, Hillary, York, and we had a brush fire in Arrow. Starting at around ten AM and the last crew's back around six PM, they were all replaced. Public enforcement has issued fourteen building permits, six plumbing permits, one specialty permit, fifteen certificates for the occupancies. Thirty-four inspections and three violations pending. Planning, planning and economic development, shootout back cleanup is Saturday, April twenty-sixth at nine AM, correct?
Correct.
And they are also having a shootout back design, farm workshop on May nineteenth, five to seven PM. Transfer station, we hired a high-time attendant, seems to be working out, the, the, seems to be working out fairly well, we don't see official well. Um, we have moved the plastic veil on from the spot, we moved it out of twenty feet, anticipating moving the. Uh, newer single-saw recycling veil, it's gotta go there, it is a used one, but we'll go there for that. Again, ready for that transition from here on July first.
At the library, your book sale will start this Thursday and it will run through Saturday. Next week, whatever's left, they're gonna do a dollar for a bag of books. Uh, recreation sponsorships are still rolling in for the strawberry run and they are taking good shape, um, that's only two months away. Going to the strawberry mess, seniors, about seventy people joined for Easter last week. Thursday, the seniors are heading to the Supreme's tribute show at Danny Morris' port, yeah, club. Assessing, Brittany was in class all week and passed the International Association of Assessors, the income approached two thousand. The town clerk, the new plates are gonna be loud next Thursday. Uh, finance, HR, benefits, uh, we had a borough academy discussion with the attorney about prequalification of exempt status. The tree away conversion is now complete, we got a couple little hiccups, but we got through those. The annual report has been sent to the printer, we have the draft.
The annual report has been sent to the printer, we gave the draft back today, so we're reviewing that, we'll give them the okay and everything's okay tomorrow. Received information from uh FEMA, which is the FEMA of Maine. And they had me sign off on the two storms for January and April of last year, so it seems that things are going forward with that. It says in the letter that, you know, the obligations from FEMA have all been obligated to the town itself, right? So I haven't heard anything from FEMA, but I'm hoping this is a good sign that FEMA at state is moving forward with their initiative. And uh working with DeCarlo on the tenth budget to present to you in my name.
Um, under my office, uh, we had a discussion at Old Point with a construction manager. For the release, for the ad release, which has been done, it's feedback, May fifteen, twenty twenty five, by twelve PM, I expressed some concerns about your scheduling. They said absolutely no problem, we work all around that. Um, so, uh, that has been out for two weeks, it will be out till the fifteenth, we have had a couple of inquiries, your people have called. On questions, certain things, looking for information, and they said they're gonna be sending us, filling out this questionnaire. Uh, myself and Jen had a meeting with uh for a couple hours with the last all associates to discuss interior finishes. Um, and on of the building of the project, um, more or less carpets and hardwood floors and. We we agreed, we don't want all black walls, so, but it was just a thought, maybe we can wander back, we can. And then on four seventeen, they had a mechanic, mechanical engineer to associate, associate to our town hall, scoping out. All the mechanical engineering stuff and looking at the seals and the handlings and so good and so on. I had a meeting with the uh South Borough Sword District. In conjunction with the main pollution discharge elimination system, A G U K. Um, it's referencing to how much nitrogen is going into the San Antonio River. Um, there's a permit that's required for them with these sore nitric, which is twenty six. They have a preliminary permit right now, they have to get the permanent permit, you know, if you get that, they need some additional assistance. So there's two pieces of it, the stored water goes into it and our stormwater runs in. They need assistance to reach, they have lower nitrogen involved with by us helping them clean up our stormwater. Which is on our project already, we have, we already, I ran to that and working on that, but there's some ideas, so. We had a meeting, we met with the state representatives, they were very happy that there's gonna be a joy work in commitment between. Us and the Sword District in trying to help get them their permits. Um, I also had a meeting with Scott, um, Swords, Sword District Superintendent. About two hours, talked about funding, um, long-term planning, long-term C I P planning for them. Um, they're, they're in. I I shouldn't speak to Swordy, it's, it's, Scott has the graph on it and then the group has the graph on it. You know what they need, they have filed for, they did receive a three million dollar grant, but it was canceled at the federal level. They have reapplied to Mrs. Collins' office, Mrs. Collins, soon it came up. So I released loads of pictures and are in hopes of, that they'll get that funding project. Um, there are more grants in the pipeline, they've been looking, and I've offered to have Kyle help any way we can, so. Um, I'm meeting early now with Scott and the Sword District to help them, help, we'll help them any way we can. Um, working that. We met with the H R consultant, contract consultant, that's the old one. Over the handbook changes and review, which is one of the ones that I've been trying to work on since I can hire him, I told you we can update the handbook. Personal policy, um, so we started, we had a two and a half, two and a half hour meeting the other day, we decided we're doing it word for word, going through it. We reached about halfway, there's a lot more to do, policy was a lot of even. Um, so we're gonna continue on with that, in hopes that we'll finish today sometime and have a. Draft document, we can have a workshop with you folks with. The biggest goal, um, is coming back from Betsy as well, Matt Taylor Savage, our attorney, attorney, is that. So it's been many, many years with a lot of changes that needs to be updated, you know, state changes that are all changes. The reason it's not, it wasn't changed because that was adopted as an ordinance, when it really should be taken out as an ordinance to be a policy. Is that we can adopt it, they change it in that annually very easily, like, like moving into policy. So that'll probably be, I know it is gonna be our condition for both of them coming to us. They have to change it from an ordinance to a bias, but that'll, that'll be better. Um, I received a letter from the fire chief. Um, he reports that he would like to dispose of the older engine, it's a nineteen ninety six pair slam pumper. It was purchased huge in two thousand nineteen from Franklin Square, he's deemed it that once the new pumper gets here, it can be obsolete. No longer good to us, um, so under the code charter, I can dispose of that, I can order out the chief to. Contact a fire truck vendor to put it out for sale nationwide, that money will go back into the C I P account, they, we have it. Listed currently for around thirty thousand, um, and the sale broker takes five percent, that's on his side, and take the five percent. So we're hoping we could, there's be some interest coming out of where it came from down in Long Island, New York, we use those time in boxing. So we're hoping to be, we could, thirty thousand dollars, we're putting across. And then, uh, I met with the most, the trustee committee, several of those people today. Um, they've been doing some stuff with Toshki, they would like to do a, a proclamation proclamation day or a day, an on day or. Yeah, yeah, it's a sister city, but today they're recognized, there'd be Tito Stevie Day, it's all clear one. Um, it's in June, and we require you to proclamation, I told them to stop for them, give me a formal letter. I'll bring it back to you, tell me yes on the formal letter, and then I'll draw the proclamation and. They'll do it all, get it all worked up and be nice and look at something you wanna do, so that's all I am, that I'm here, none of your thoughts.
Thanks very much, um, my friends, Jen.
I have one question for Tim.
Oh.
Um, have you had any reports on groupers sands of where the repair that they've been cracking? So I know Huzzy was out looking at it last week, cause I almost hit him, um, it doesn't look like it's from what beneath, it looks like the actual. They've been cracking on them for right in the portal age, I don't know, I'm sure giving shout to Jay, but.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure Jay gives a little talk.
Just, just cover that.
Yeah.
John, you have any comments?
Uh, free veterans for yoga is back, it's now at the rec center on Fridays. So if you know any veterans that would like to take the yoga class, have them screw it on over to the rec center Friday morning. You believe it's ten o'clock, I was waiting for a text back from. My significant others at the time, I think, yeah, other than that, it's up to you.
Thank you, um, Melissa.
I just wanted to uh, thank uh everyone for the public comments tonight uh in regarding the two eight seven G topic. I know it's been on my mind and I appreciate also, um. Yeah, I appreciate uh Tim for the clarification on the topic, I think it's uh. Really good to know that the police chief and and the town manager both have no intention of entering into a two eight seven G agree. Um, I also just wanna extend my appreciation for the FOPLIS and the, in the conversations. Um, you know, because everybody, it is, it's a sort of a heated conversation, there's a lot of emotion, emotion. So I just wanted to thank everybody, public staff, everybody for for uh having the conversation, so thanks.
Thank you, Jeff, um, I'm just reminding everybody that we already did this, but the cleanup of this Saturday at shootout park starts at nine AM, um. Hopefully it'll be a nice day and a good community event here and now, um. For the council, um, just a reminder for us and also for Hyatt, if we can make sure we have an executive session on our agenda at our next meeting for personnel. I was gonna suggest start at five forty five, cause I know we all wanna chat a little bit before we're doing those interviews, so we can start at five forty five, next meeting. Um, for the the sewer district topic, Tim. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, cause I agree, I think that we shouldn't necessarily be like speaking about their issue, but I think it's been brought to us in terms of just a concern. I wonder if we could reach out to the sewer district and ask them to just come to a council meeting and just kinda let us know what the scoop is or extend an invitation if they were open to that.
I I would extend an invitation, if they're validating this, because everyone has.
I just think like, it, the issue's been brought up, I think it sounds like everything's. Taken care of, but I also wanna make sure that we're hearing that like directly from the sewer district if if possible, so. Let's ask, so you don't have any concerns with that, getting an update from the sewer district. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to let everybody know, um, there is um a a citizens initiative happening in the state of Maine on to gather. Sixty eight thousand signatures throughout the state, and if those signatures are gathered, the state government will be shut down. Effective July first through November first, um, that doesn't necessarily impact the South Borough Municipal Budget because we have a rainy day fund and. We get, um, we would potentially be delayed in those funds, but I just think it's important for the public to be aware of that. And it would have potential impacts to other budgets in this community, specifically school, so just be aware of that as you're navigating around the next weeks. That's all that I have, thank you.
That'll turn, you're clear.
Second, all of the favor, the aye, fine, we're good, thank you, everyone.
Six to two o'clock, rain up to inch on Saturday.